We're good, 7:00 PM? Regular meeting of the Board of Education, District 208.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, clear the roll call, please.
Ms. Gascow?
Here.
Ms. Gascow?
Here.
Ms. Trusco?
Here.
Slack?
Here.
Novak?
Here.
Here.
Here. Visitor's statements, do we want to visit first? So for those watching at home, we have some period costume.
Hello, as you often probably tell, we are all students that are part of the RB Theater Program.
And we're here to invite you to our show, Guys and Dolls. The show dates are February 29th at 7:00 PM, Friday, March 1st at 7:00 PM.
Saturday, March 2nd at 7:00 PM.
March 3rd at 2:00 PM.
When you're guy or doll, please come and see our show in our auditorium at RB.
Wonderful, they have tickets on sale beforehand, or how do we get tickets?
I think you can buy them online or you can get them at the door.
Okay, I think it does sell out often, so people should be advised to buy them beforehand. Okay, I love Guys and Dolls.
Ms. Jackson is a sponsor, do you want to say anything or share anything?
Um, they've been working really hard, we have over 100 kids involved in this production, so, one of your advisors to the board is our house manager, he's, and I meant to say about the last show, that without this guy, the evacuation would not have gone as well.
I was gonna make a comment about keeping the lights on, but I won't do that.
So, anyway, over 100 kids.
That's awesome, no fog machine this time, no, right?
I don't do fog ever, that's not me, I'm just real mom about that.
Okay.
We'll break a leg and good luck and we'll be there.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right.
Other public comments, if anyone doesn't mind letting the students go first, but who has here for public comments?
Seating area. The seating area is just so little. It's shrink.
I think we're okay, I think we're accommodating okay.
Good evening, my name's Liz Bushio, I live in Riverside. And I am here today to express my disappointment in the decision to cancel the Bulldog Buddy Choir again. We were informed there were six students signed up and therefore it was not viable. But I really question if there would have been more students signed up if they hadn't been discouraged from taking it. I sincerely hope the board will ask the administration the following questions. How many students asked about the class but were told by their counselors that it probably would not run? I did hear of a few that that happened to. How many students from the general population asked if they could sign up for one semester but were told no? And were the students in the special education department made aware of this class? And if special education was not made aware of the class, why not? When we came to you in May of last year and asked if this class would run or if it could run, we were told it was too late. Well, it's February, and I know it's not too late to put this class back on the roster. And it's especially shocking in light of the efforts being made by RB to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion, that this class was canceled. I mean, what better way to integrate the special education students with the general population than through music? So I urge you to listen to the community regarding our support for music education and have this class run for two years before you determine if it's viable or not. Because we all know it really does take time to build a program. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
We will have a list of all classes that are running at the March Board meetings, correct Dr. Smith?
Hi, I'm Annabelle Ventura, I'm a senior here. I will also kind of be adding on to Ms. Bushio's statement. I really think that Bulldog Buddy Choir would be such a great opportunity for so many students in the school. I was supposed to be taking it this year, but unfortunately it didn't run. I was one of, I think, six students who signed up and was told it was gonna run and was informed when I got my class list that I was not gonna be in it. Which, like, expecting to be in a class and then it not showing up on my schedule, I obviously went to my counselor and said, hey, like, I was not put in this class, is it still running? And then she told me that there was not enough numbers. And it was very upsetting, and then I got really excited when we were told that it was gonna run this year. And when I found out just yesterday that it's not gonna run, I was very frustrated. Went home, so upset. And personally, I have experience with, like, my older brother, he was in the special ed department year. And he was in choir all four years. And seeing how much he grew as a student in the music department and in choir, it's such an important thing that we need to have a Bulldog Buddy Choir because my mom fought tooth and nail for my brother to be in general education choir. But now that we have this opportunity, it needs to run and give these students what they deserve. That's just my personal opinion, and I know so many people agree with me in the fact that we need this class to run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for signing in. Do we have additional public comment this evening? Questions, comments, ones more, you good?
Good.
Foyer request, I think there was one foyer request.
The warrant foyer was from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association asking for names and emails to certify staff are retiring this year.
No comments were submitted on that. Moving on to consent agenda, I didn't see any comments on that one beforehand, would you mind, Ms. Smith?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on January 9th and 23, 2024, open and closed as presented in the February 13, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second for Ms. Locke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to old business, nothing under life safety, but there's an update on the NAMIA contract.
Well, we did two site visits, myself, Board Member Novak, Burham, our facilities manager, I cannot say his last name, I apologize, so I don't want to be disrespectful to his last name, so I just call his first name. And then Dr. Smetana was able to join us on the second one, two weeks ago. Definitely a feasible project for the district, and I know the board has an appetite to do this as well, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community and the students that they'd like to see us, you know, continue our sustainability initiatives. So I've asked Dr. Smetana to provide two recommendation or provide some background to the board on kind of how we plan this out and also how we finance this. And we have the commercial kitchen as well as the solar panels. And so I'm gonna let Dr. Smetana give you a little background, kind of what we've discussed and how we're looking at this.
To finish the discussion on the solar project, we were able to confirm that it won't have an impact on the roof or its warranty. And we did receive notification last month that we did receive that $50,000 matching grant from the state that we had designated for the solar project. You have to write the grant specifically for something and then you cannot change it. That money has to be used within two years from disbursement, or we need to return that money to the state. I do anticipate sometime this school year and the next month or two, we should probably receive it from the state. Just depends on when their timing is. So then that will start the two-year clock. I attached the option that we previously discussed at the board, which is that middle option that we discussed for solar panels that provides the biggest return on the district's investment. And that was also large enough to hopefully have several companies interested in competing for the project. Nicholas and Associates would be able to help oversee the project, but they would not be a CM at risk, which is construction manager at risk, due to the design-build structure of the project. Again, before we engage Nicholas, we would bring that to the board for approval. So the district should anticipate that this probably will come in at about $1.5 million. And again, we recover a lot of that money, but we have to spend upfront $1.5 million.
Dr. Smetana, can I pause you there? Can I just make sure the board, if you're not, it's on page 23 of Board Book. The second page of Dr. Smetana's background sheet is laying out what she's talking about now. This was all added for this meeting, so if you want to look at it, if you can't see it on the screen, that's the page you should reference. Sorry, Krista, please continue.
So that project, like I said, the updated estimate for that is $1.5 million. However, the updated estimate for the culinary lab is currently $3 million. We haven't, fully have it designed yet, we're meeting with the architect tomorrow. Once we can, you know, narrow down what the design looks like, we'll be have a better estimate of what the cost is. But the rough estimate is $3 million. So this, in combination with the solar panels, would cost $4.5 million. Spending this money would drop the fund balance as a percent of expenditures to 43.93%. And so that percentage means that the district could operate for a little over five months, 5.3 months, without receiving additional revenue. Prior to COVID, I would not have, right, probably batted an eye at that. But given that Cook County the last two years has been very late in paying property taxes or distributing property taxes, we need to be able to operate through December, sometimes we don't receive that money to January. So I don't have a crystal ball as to what the Cook County is going to do, but it makes me concerned that if we spend this money and should Cook County be delayed on distributing property tax, we would have to issue tax anticipation warrants. So I would recommend that we maintain at least a 50% fund balance in order to be able to account for anything like that that may come up, since that's been our reality for the last two years. So there are really two options for the board to consider. The first option is to prioritize the culinary lab, since that has a more direct impact on students. The district could go out to bid this spring, and then the work could start late summer and be completed hopefully during the first semester of the school year. That would also help save a little bit of money if we can do some of the construction during the school year. And then once we go out to bid, we would know exactly how much that project is gonna cost, and that would give us a better estimate of what our fund balance would be at that time. And so then we could discuss when and if to pursue solar panels. The second option is to complete both projects at the same time. This timing would save a little bit of money because we could engage Nicholas and Associates to do both projects at the same time. This option would require, in my opinion, I would be recommending that we issue non-taxable working cash bonds specifically for capital projects if we did both at the same time. Since the district has some bonds coming off the books in December of this year, that, those were the two-year life safety bonds that we issued, we would be able to give the taxpayers a break while also completing both projects. So if the board is even interested in pursuing that or having a conversation about that and what that looks like, I can have Liz Hennessy come, who's our bond counsel, come and present to the board. Myself and Dr. Skinkis are meeting with her tomorrow to review in more detail what the numbers would look like. But in my preliminary conversations, like I said, we would be able to give taxpayers a break while also completing both projects.
So we have some significant debt coming off the books, so taxpayers should be receiving a significant tax break in the year '25, when a lot of the referendum bonds are starting to come off of the books.
So just to reiterate, they come off in December of '24, correct?
Yes, but we get that money again in the collection period, then we kind of pay it back. The calendar is always, remember, when you're in arrears, before levies and paying the taxes back. But there'll be a pretty good tax break for the taxpayers. For those two, the small life safety bonds, when we talk about taking our bond, we're talking maybe like half the project, a million to 2 million, just to make sure we have enough. Should it cost a full three, and we want to still do the solar panels at one point, like, and we're not, we could dedicate that to the capital project and not, you know, totally diminish the fund balance in the event we have to go six months. We do a short-term payback, extend our debt limit a little bit. So that's definitely an option that the board should consider.
How do we get the money back? Because the solar panels are basically gonna fund them.
Seven years, they'll pay them, they'll pay about 50% off, which should get six, 23, or seven, or did they say seven years, we should pay the 1.5 off?
Seven years, we would recoup all the money that we spent. We'll get a large chunk back from the federal rebate, but it's a brand-new program, and so people are not hopeful that you get the money right away. Especially because we're a school and schools don't have taxes to pay, and so they're still needing to work out what that process looks like. So my concern is that that rebate isn't going to happen in the same fiscal year. It might happen a year and a half from when we spend the money. And so we won't really recover all of the money we spend until seven years, roughly.
But it is anticipated, and from the presentation, we had to be a full recovery at the close of that seven years. Thank you, that was one of my questions, I wanted just to reiterate. And the $50,000 matching grant, that can be used for design, or is it, it's not limited to implementation?
Correct, it can just be used towards a project.
So what I was thinking is, we have a Finance Advisory Council meeting already set up for the end of the month to review financial projections. I don't see what the harm would be to have Liz show us what it would look like to borrow a million and a half or $2 million short-term and see what the impact is on the community as well as on the district. It can't hurt, it would just give you the board a full plate of knowledge before they make a final decision.
Does that cut into the money that we've held aside for the land acquisition?
That is, that is set aside separate, remember, that was specifically. Now, sometimes when people hear the word working cash bond, they get nervous because it's like it could be used for anything. We would specifically do working cash tied to a capital project or specific parameters that you have to follow.
Similar to how we did the fieldwork.
Right, so that is, it's assigned to a capital project, and when that's done, it's paid off and it's not. So it can't be thrown into general fund balance to use for salaries or something of that nature, or random expenses.
And do we anticipate a need for additional life safety bonds?
Possibly, but the roofs that were completed in 2009 under the large referendum, they only have a 20-year warranty, so they don't start coming out of warranty till '29. So we have a few more years left on their warranty before we would even start to look to replace those roofs.
So theoretically, we'd be looking to issue working cash bonds before the end of '24?
No.
Or sometime in '25?
No, in '24, you have, we would have up until February of 2025 to issue them. So sometime between now and February of 2025.
And this is assuming that the county is late with tax bills, is that what the risk is? That's what the biggest concern is?
We would not be able to operate.
Even though this last cycle was less than.
I would anticipate those bills being issued closer to a deadline.
So I think we get the background knowledge from Liz, we see what the impact is at the community and for the, and how it benefits the district and its planning. You know, the other option is, you know, we have kids signed up for classes, and that enrollment has increased again so far through the staffing process. So you look at doing that project first. Once we go out to bid and we see what the final numbers are, it may give us a clearer picture of, hey, we can start the solar now, or we need to wait a year on solar.
Well, we are.
That's the other option.
And we are in an election year, so things could change. And so sometimes it might be better to start on projects because a year into, I mean, there could be a whole new administration, and so things, priorities could flip, and so.
Talking about the federal grants or something, the state.
Federal level.
Yeah, I mean, because it's a big election year. '24, November '24, it's a presidential election.
I know, I think.
So, I mean, there could be new priorities and different things, and so in some ways, if we think it's a good time to go now, I mean, if we started to the program with the rebates, can they rescind that offer?
No.
No, so that's, I mean, one thing.
So that's, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, if we, but they could say, no more, right? They could.
Well, it's subject to an annual appropriation, which was Dr. Smetana's point, right? So it's legislatively allowable, but then it has to be appropriated. And because we're not perhaps at the top of the list, being a public sector entity, we may not get first bite, but we would be in the queue, and once, we'd have an obligation. They would have an obligation to fulfill it. Yeah, right.
Again, I think we let Krista and I meet with Liz tomorrow and get some bond options. We bring it to the Finance Council. If it makes sense, we could bring it to the board in February, maybe take action on it in March.
And the only reason we're considering those bonds is because of Cook County's tax.
Yes, I don't feel comfortable.
Because of that, okay.
Well, I thought also, I mean, it's, so assuming that there's a regular tax cadence, we would still be dipping to 43, 44%, what did I read here?
40, 40.
Yes, we would still dip to that percentage.
Yeah.
But the reality is, I wouldn't need to dip into that money to pay bills.
Correct.
Right, where like, I've been, even though the field project money has been earmarked for the field during the past two years, I've been using that money to pay bills until our property tax money comes in. And so that, that's my concern, is that when we dip to 43%, if we are delayed, I'm not gonna be able to pay the district's bills.
So how does that compare, maybe this is, if I'm taking your question, run with it. How does that cost compare to a tax anticipation warrant then?
That's exactly it. I believe there's a very high interest rate for the tax anticipation.
But I think, I think that being spelled out might be helpful as well. Because I would, I would anticipate the bond market is still good, right? And so issuing a de minimis amount of bonds does make a certain amount of sense, assuming Hennessy agrees, right? I'd like to see some actual numbers, though, just to kind of, kind of compare.
This board took out $2 million to do the cafeteria project, correct?
2.35.
2.35, and those are set to come off the books?
December of '24, that's what's coming off.
So we paid that in less than two years.
Correct, two years.
So we're swapping out one for the other.
Correct.
Kind of what I was thinking.
So if we can understand what the potential tax anticipation warrant would be with the hopes that we don't have to go there, that is an option. The bond is the better, stable option. And we are looking at, is there a discussion yet? I know it's in the document, but is there a discussion on, it just makes sense to run the two at the same time in terms of construction management, specifically when Nicholas wouldn't be overseeing, but they would, rather, they would only be overseeing and wouldn't be managing the one project that gives.
They're in the building a little more.
Right.
I mean, I'm seeing heads nod, is everyone in agreement with that? We probably should, if anyone wants to bifurcate or.
And I'm asking, but also supporting that, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, that does make sense. That's one of the things we, we were kind of doing our T chart of plus-minus.
Right.
Like, student priority, you know, even though the solar panels will pay for themselves, student priority and student need is pressing.
Yeah, and we are at, how large are those foods classes now?
Dr. Freddish, you were involved in staffing today, do you have that information? Or do you know off the top of your head, like, our number of sections for foods and?
For foods, I believe we're at about 20 sections, I believe. But we will follow up with the specifics.
I thought it was, yeah, almost two full-time.
But, and this is also to get the Triton piece, right?
Correct.
Yes, so, yeah, I'm agreed, I think there's a lot of.
The dual-Triton piece, correct.
I just thought, we've seen some, some growth in this area, and I wanted to make sure it was sustainable.
All right, I think we got our direction, Krista, and we'll get cracking with Liz and put a couple options together and bring it to the Finance Council before the end of the month, and then the board. Okay, thank you.
Well, thanks, everybody. New business, payment of bills, were there any questions?
No questions were submitted. Dr. Smetana, anything you need to touch on?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Gascow?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the February 13, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second for Mr. Durkin. Clear the roll call, please.
Ms. Gascow?
Yes.
Ms. Trusco?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. Student registration fees.
Dr. Smetana, any update?
This is a first read for the registration fees for the upcoming school year. I'm recommending that we keep all fees flat for next year.
Yeah, I didn't see, there were no changes. I guess, which is the same, it was all fees flat. Were there any questions? But this is a first read, so we'll move this, do I move this to consent for next meeting?
Yeah.
Any objection from anyone? Okay, we'll do that. Out-of-state field trip request, first read.
Good evening, honorable board members. You know, we're proud of our head baseball coach, Mr. Mark Corey, who's also our special education division head, because he brought a unique opportunity to take our baseball team to play at a professional stadium in Milwaukee on May 3rd. You know, if you guys all know that we have two currently former Bulldogs that are playing at the professional level, right? If you want the kids to be professionals, you gotta get them there. So this is a unique opportunity, and I am asking that this trip is approved this evening, if that, if that's a pleasure for the board, because we do need to begin fundraising for it. You know, the only commitment is that the team has to fundraise or sell $10,000 worth of tickets. So there's no cost, but the students do have to give effort and sell those tickets.
So how are they fun, how are they raising money to go?
They'll be, they'll be selling Milwaukee Brewers tickets to two games, so they'll be selling Milwaukee Brewers tickets.
So when you're, you play the game as the high school and then you stay for the Milwaukee Brewer game?
Right, but I'm sorry, so are they selling tickets to a Brewers game now to raise that money to go?
That's the authorization to do the fundraiser, to do the.
Yeah, I'm not understanding the fundraiser, I'm sorry, that's what I'm asking about.
For them to play in May, they also gotta sell the tickets to the game.
Yes.
That same game that they're playing.
The same game that they're playing, and they would start selling those tickets now?
Right, they need board approval before they could start selling those tickets.
Okay, I was just trying to understand what the fundraiser was.
What happens if they don't reach the $10,000?
Well, I know the booster is supporting this, so we will reach it.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
But I think there was also some things where they, if the other school oversees their limit that in order to still play the game, as long as they come up to a combined number.
Oh, okay.
As long as it's 20?
I think so.
Just curious, because that's.
It's unusual.
That's a big number, and that's an unusual ask. To help them sell tickets.
But the tickets aren't a dollar either.
No, right.
Multiple levels of baseball.
And it's a regular, it's a regular game, too, it's not just the high schoolers.
You know, if you were to take about $25 a ticket each kid, maybe we'd have to sell 15, 16 tickets.
We normally go to a Brewers game, so I'm hoping we can make it to this.
Well, maybe we'll sell you a ticket to a Brewers game.
But I was just curious about the structure of the playing fee.
Well, I think we often see field trips with individual fundraising requirements. It's, we never really see them in the aggregate, so that's maybe some of the shock, too. Usually seeing an individual to go to New York, you've got to raise X number of dollars, right? Here it's.
The shock is that they're asking us to buy tickets to a professional baseball game, that's all, so, thank you.
So no student is going to be like penalized if they sell less tickets? It's all going into one pool?
One pool, yes, one general pool.
And so either the whole team goes or nothing, right?
Correct.
Yes. And we do have the support and backing of our boosters who are supporting in this.
So is the request to approve this evening, then, does anyone have any objections to that?
Right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the out-of-state trip for Varsity Baseball to participate in the High School Jamboree Future Champions Baseball Tournament at Miller Park in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, for a baseball game on May 3rd, 2024, as presented in the February 13, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second for Ms. Locke. And a roll call, please.
Ms. Trusco?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Ms. Van Harts?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gascow?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Visitor's statements, this is the second opportunity. No wish to speak. I did not ask earlier, I apologize, were there any discussion items requested by members of the board? This would be the time where we could bring things up. Looking to my right, looking to my left. Any consideration of items for future meetings from any board members? Anything from our student board members, I figured I'd open up the floor, okay? Okay, we're probably nearing that time where you're going to need to think about the student advisors to the board for next year.
They're already thinking about it. Operational calendar post-stamped.
Okay, you guys are on top of it. Matters for closed session, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific. or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. I think we have all matters.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the February 13, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second for Ms. Locke, and we need a roll call.
Ms. Locke?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
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 Ms. Raska?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it is 7:30, everyone. We want to just meet up here for closed session.